Thank you all very much, the whole public, thank you for coming out. This public hearing is intended to hear your proposal, the title draft of the transportation plan as presented. To your process, it's been a long process, been a lot of input here from a lot of folks in the community and outside the community, been a lot of work that's been put into this plan. One thing that I think is always important to keep in mind, the recommendations for recruits, also the ideas that are presented in this plan, are items that have to be approved, engineered, studied, and ultimately funded through meetings with the DOT. And so, in so many ways, it's a wish list, things that we would like to see, some things may or may not have, but certainly some concepts that develop out of the community as we're going through that process. With that, also, as the draft has been given to the four county commissioners, it was posted on the website, it was copied to county managers' office, and it did the proper amount, that's about a million. And so, with that, I would like to open up the opportunity for public here to comment. We have a signing sheet, there may be some additional posts, we want to sign in, now we're about nine names, and so... We need to kind of look at that for about three minutes, Dan, if there's a group, if they're using that as a question, we might go through more than here. You want to tell them?
Sure. I'm having trouble looking for last names, Elijah? Please state your name, if you're representing the organization, just yourself, just let us know, thank you.
Hi, my name is Elijah, if anybody needs to check the landing page. I just came to visit, I forgot about my last name this summer, and they'll forgive me if I miss a beat on this. I was basically interested in buying it because the National Park in the area, they want to use for outdoor recreation. I love my wife and children who always want to come to Western Ridge, July, to hide in the high, I ride mountain bikes and go for scenic drives. It's always been a dream of ours to have a second home in the mountains. Last December, after years of saving, much careful planning, my wife and I purchased a 100-foot restored log cabin, and then we were in Judge Creek, we were in the mountains. It wasn't easy for you, you know, the climate, and it was not something I did lightly, or not was what we were going to speculate, real estate or anything, I had a lot of attention of keeping it and passing it down to my kids. The last three months, February, enjoying our friend time, the place all set up, enjoying my life, you know, a good time, I think. And then, I guess it was a couple weeks ago, my neighbor got my attention, the fact that the proposed transportation plan, essentially, if all things were considered, essentially , I don't know, which makes me feel a bit foolish not to go into research, but at the same time, I know that I'm starting, it's... I guess everybody, my only real problem with like, 121 or 122, 229, 325, 425, 525, all of them, I don't know, I think they should have all taken care of. It's also, the red is bad, I've never seen it, it's code, this is no road, it's completely private, and there's just no reason, there's not that much traffic on 224, there's not that much traffic on 129. The whole time I've come up here in the last five months, I've never once seen any traffic. And I know from research that if you try finding people's patterns and violate their property rights, they're going to have to add a penalty, public, which is based on traffic patterns, not based on safety, not based on, you know, the idyllic model, where there's unfortunate living economy, there's no components that could be sort of what's... And I'll tell you this, if you tell them, listen, there may be heroes for Colorado, but you probably won't people ask, but this kind of county is struggling, okay? A lot of times, this is the last one I have to make, if you want to carry with your role, your first ten is to carefully respect the property rights that they're under. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. Sam Evans.
Hey, everybody, I'm Sam Evans, and I don't live in Grand County, I live in Asheville, work for the Southern Environmental Law Center, but I work for the Southern Environmental Law Center because I love these mountains, and I mean, these mountains in particular. I've lived my whole life on some part of the 404, since I left my parents' house in Alhambra. Moved to Chattanooga, I live in Swain County, lived up Western Creek Road, now live in Asheville. I know these roads, I know the problems they have, I've ridden every inch of them on my bicycle, driven them, I know them in the spring, summer, winter, fall, and I want to, you know, I want to point out for just a second what the draft conference of transportation plan does, so, and I've read the whole document, I'm probably one of the few people in here who've read it or whatever. What the plan does is say, we don't want to study improved existing, you know, it says we want to do the big four lane road, we want to run through Judge Creek, that's, that's what's being voted on tonight. So, the, you know, the, the plan doesn't just say we want a four lane, and it doesn't just say we want a four lane through Judge Creek, it says it's not even worth studying or looking at other alternatives. And I think that's a big mistake for Grand County, because, you know, pick up on what Grace said, and these, these alternatives, these proposals, these recommendations, have to be studied, they have to be afforded, they have to be something that the DOT can pay for, or they're not ever going to get built. They all said they have to go through the NEPA process, so the NEPA process, as probably lots of folks in here know, stalled out last time, stalled out, you know, with a nonrecurrence from the environmental agencies, because they knew that this project wasn't justified by the NEPA, there wasn't traffic need, and the environmental impact was huge. So, you know, the process stalled out, this project reboots basically the same thing, and in what appears to be even a more difficult context, a more difficult valley to build through, so, you know, it's hard to see how this is an improvement, it's hard to see how it fixes anything, and at the same time, it says, we don't even want to study, we don't even want to look at other alternatives, that's not, that's not the way you approach something like this. So, and the last one I want to make, and I want to take pretty important time, is just how expensive this road project would be. Now, Grand County has, well, there is in the DOT kitty, about $275 million that can be used for Appalachian development highway system routes, one of those is 404. That, of course, would be something that could come to Grand County, that's money that could come to Grand County. It could also go to 404, the Haynesville to Atlanta road, it could be sucked up by 26 conceivably too, that's another Appalachian development highway road. But $275 million will not begin to cover the roads proposed in the draft conversation plan, it's not going to get, it's not going to get there, because that money would be sucked up by the other, the other piece that you're talking about, and the draft, the draft conversation plan, the 143 piece. So, you know, what I want to propose to you is that there's a way to use that money to make good improvements to the roads that you have, and get that money used in Grand County now, you know, we're not talking just about new paint on roads, or garbage, we're talking about real money, $275 million is real money, and it's a bird in the hand, you know, I think, we all know about the bird in the hand, and this track, this draft one, not only it says, we're not even, you know, we're not even interested, that it kills the bird in the bush, you know, you have to, the bird in the hand, and it says we're going to put all our eggs in a basket, and we're never going to get it, and I think that's a big, I think that's a big mistake, so, you know, some of you may not trust me because of who I represent. I would be very willing to call you and show you the numbers on paper, anytime you want to see them, about where this money comes from, where it is, but, you know, finish the climbing now, for top, for to put it in the top, straight the birds out, you know, these are real things that can be done, climbing legs on one foot, these are all real, tangible benefits, they can come to Grand County, they can come down.
Good evening, my name is Stuart, I'm a conservation planner with the Wilderness Society, I'm based in Nashville, but I did want to emphasize that I've been coming to Grand County for about 40 years, for the national forests, you know, I've come here to camp and hike and refresh myself in the national forests, Inverly County is one of my very favorite places to come. At a professional level, I deal with national forest issues, and very interested in the future of national forests, and any impacts to the national forests. I've been following 404 for almost a decade, very concerned with potential impacts of 404 or the national forest lands, and was very disturbed when I saw Judge Creek route, because it seems to offer some of the worst potential for impacts to national forest lands, to the streams coming off of national forest lands, I was just up in the area today looking over, and, you know, also very concerned with the impacts to the community there, it's lovely, whole community, beautiful, and, you know, there's nothing, that four lane road going up through that valley, it would just devastate that community, continue on up into the national forest and devastate that area, which would be useful to, you know, chill all, other than the more that features in this area. So, I would urge you to, as Sam said, you know, look at other options, you know, there are other options that would address the real problems a lot better than this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Hi, everybody, I'm Roger Carroll, I'm a member of the town council of Lake Huron People, I'm also a member of the ARD regional planning organization, and with some of you and Greg, I've attended just about every meeting, it's been hell on this process over the past two years. This is a tough decision for you all, but it's not a decision for a year to, it's a decision that will set the stage for the next 50 years for this community. It's about 50 years ago that the federal government said, we want to help the economy in the Appalachian area, and establish the notion of these roads, as well as many other development activities, and we're about the only piece left that has been finished. And the decision that we make today will determine whether your administrator, people in the regional council, our elected officials, post state and national, will give behind completion of this road or not. If it isn't supported here, it won't be completed. Now, I want to express support and sympathy to the folks who are concerned about environmental issues, but all this does is let that study begin, you know, let that analysis begin. And when people talk about this paying five or six hundred million dollar roads, because of certain criteria, the naked cost of water rather than would today, than if it had been built for me for years ago, and those should have a tunnel for instance, it's got to be some compromise to figure, we worked out on whether we need a tunnel or not. What happens in Judge Creek, and I have great sympathy for the folks that live there, you know, and how to protect it, and what does that protect it, and how do you protect streams from construction, and whatever more, once the roads are built, those are all things that will be internalized into the detail, once this process begins. So, I want to let you know that our town council discussed this today, and we didn't make a final decision, we're waiting to see what happens here tonight, but we are overall some lawyer of this plan, number one. Number two, to put a little humor in this, we may have some humor in this situation, with this 404, I would range from 82 to 68, that's going to move to the upper, to 82, and the comment was, we'd like to drive on this four lane road before we're all planted, so we hope that the group will make a decision tonight, and we'll support you whatever way you go on.
Thank you. Dennis.
I'm one of the, I'm on the edge of Judge Creek, and I'm hoping for justice, and this is a pit to be involved in, with four towns, two towns in Judge Creek, and why not the entire community, we're out of it. 129, follow the home, 129, you're gone, if you don't, if you don't stand up and fight for your rights, you're going to lose your home. This road's not needed, it's not needed, this is breed pure. If it fall here, our economy, we have 10,000 motorcycles a weekend, and that's for economy, not this road, and I'm going to fight.
Thank you. Louis Stewart.
Good evening, my name is Louis Stewart, I grew up in Grand County, and grandkids from our personal household are not taking 47, y'all are so young. I went to Jacksonville for, and worked 36 years with Southern Bay and AT&amp;T Telephone Company, and retired in 1987 as a manager with AT&amp;T. My love for Grand County, I'm a student, my identity, please leave Highway 920, excuse me, please leave Highway 929 alone, people love the Kirby Topten Road, there's about 72 curves in three or four miles straight around the Topten Road. Kids used to pick up slave rock and sell, sell rock to people for tents at the pound, to put in their goldfish tanks and firebags, that's how I made money, every dime counted. As a teenager, I paddled apples and cider at the old Rock Overlook on the old Topten Road to find my school clothes from Silver Oak catalog. Apples sold free for a dime, and cider was a nickel a glass. I never knew my shoe size, so I would draw an outline of my foot on machine notebook paper, and made it to Silver Oak catalog. Luckily, my shoes always fit, coat cost a nickel, moon pies cost a nickel, movies cost a dime, for one quarter you could have saved an envelope. Family homes along 129 have been passed down several generations, and families would have to move, which would be very, very upsetting. People take vacation and come here to ride the dragon trail on the lumberjack, they love the Kirby Dragon Road, don't mess up a good thing that people love, please. Please leave Highway 129 alone, and let people enjoy these slow-paced lifestyles. My favorite song is "God Bless the USA", my favorite motto is "God Bless Beautiful Grand County". Thank you for listening and intertension.
Thank you. Marshall Evans. Marshall.
My name is Marshall Raffens, recently moved here about 14 years ago, I live in this county, I love the school, I understand this ars of means to roads, but I think the money you could have spent in alternatives, in the three lanes, I see what benefit you can add to it when it's four lane road. Why would you start in Grand County if you have four lane, for making three reasons, something to eat, gas, or just want to see how small this county is? This money could be well spent somewhere else, the environmental impact of this is going to be enormous. Right now, if you go to other counties that have four lane roads, you'll notice the towns are tired, the streams are dirty, the county is dirty. People who come to your four lane road, they're going to be scared of this. Luckily, we just been picking up trash along the road, it's not the local residents, it's from people who come to here speeding through this stormy autumn winter, so we need to create a few buses and looking for your planes, where you got here, I think we need to do some more studying, look back, and see the alternatives that we got available for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie May.
Hey, folks, I'm Melanie May, I'm the chair of Way South, I live in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. Way South stands for Responsible Transportation in Appalachia. We started out fighting the IT corridor, which was supposed to go from Knoxville to Savannah, and for a variety of reasons, not just us, but we did win that battle, and so we've been following 404, this is going on both here in North Carolina and in Tennessee. What we represent is the environment out here, this lovely, gorgeous place that you guys live, I live in the city, I grew up in the country, but I live in the city, because that's where I have to work, but, so we speak for the mountains, the wildlife, the water. What we see here is that Grand County is a fabulous tourism economy and potential for tourism economy. Tourism economy and four lane roads and strip malls and gas stations are not the same thing. You want strip malls and gas stations coming up, so we've got them. I have taken four, 500 miles last year, I think thousands of miles in Southern Appalachia, yeah, for the reference of the environment of folks, but we're not against you guys, okay? We understand, takes me a long time to get here too, we understand you guys have needs, you have better transportation needs, okay? Everybody in Way South understands that, and we're supportive of that. Where we disagree is how to do it. What we think is you guys have $275 million that is more or less available for this area, it's for Appalachian roads, it could be taken by IT facilities or other projects, but right now, it's available to you guys. $275 million is a long way, you can make a lot of improvements in your roads for $275 million. And gentlemen from L.A. Santila, you know, you could get that done in your lifetime and the other folks on your council's lifetime. The road that is being proposed in the transportation plan here is, we're talking a 10-year, 20-year or more plan, that's going to cost billions of dollars, that you guys all know, we don't have, everybody knows that, okay? You've got $275 million at your disposal, you might consider scoping your needs and your wants to have money that is available to you. One thing that we're, we've been following 404 in part because of the environmental concerns, water quality is a big issue, I went up to Judge Creek today, this is a place that is loaded with water, remember that part of the reason that we are where we are is because the Army Corps Division of Water Quality had concern about the impact of the four lane 404 on water quality, and so now we're talking about building something on Judge Creek. This is a water quality problem, it's going to be a water quality problem, it's going to be an engineering problem, and it's going to be expensive. And something else you guys don't know, from Missouri, the Missouri Department of Transportation took out my man in his land, and the rest of the time that I lived there, I had to live right next to a really loud 55 miles per hour highway, it's part of why I'm really passionate about highways, I do not want this to happen to these folks on 129 and Judge Creek. It may not affect you guys, but you guys probably listen more out, so it's a big deal to look at, folks, it's a lot hanging over your head, be worried about somebody's going to take your land, and what if quality like is going to be not for the roads? It's a really serious issue, so we're really very concerned about that. Something I would like to point out, this is some of the stuff that came out of Optin, 73% of the people said in regards to 404, they wanted solutions with available funding, even if that meant we're going in four lanes. Or minimizing environmental impacts, even if that meant we're going in four lanes. So, I think the transportation plan that being proposed isn't consistent with Optin. Thanks so much, lady governor.
Really, thank you. Yeah, I'm living that way, a little bit of Judge Creek, and I'm against four lane road in Judge Creek, in fact, I'm against four lane road anywhere, because around this mountain, two wrist tang, it was better in 2000, the four lane road. It would be devastated, especially in Judge Creek, the string would be damaged, you can't do that, road, road would be done, and a four lane road would cut through the mountain like that, and I think it costs about another tunnel to go through the head of Judge Creek there. Now, another tunnel, tunnel went through there, why do you go through the four lane road that's going down there? If you got, that's, for a fellow tunnel, that's a lot, it just creates a lot of heart and fear, and what you're going to do with this, that's the field and these mountains, you talk about 120, 100, 200 foot round waves, they'll get to 400 and 600, it'd be like, what would stick over there, it was a wave, they had to see it with helicopters, I've got pictures of that, and, again, I repeat some nurses, but if it goes up 120, I have to think that's going to affect, that's going to affect, just, people like that, they don't need to be, have roads higher than their house, or lower than their house, and that's what happens, it cuts the fields, and we get significant structure damage, and you don't see things like that. And we have seen any construction, anything like that, and you don't see things like that come after. It's already done. And, but that happens, too. So you got to do something else to satisfy that. And it takes a long time to design a road. It's not something that just comes out. That's why I've learned, it takes a long time. There have been drills, there's, there's got to be so much evidence out there that's just there. And what we need to do in Grand County, and that being, if we move towards, that's essentially how we have to play together. I, every time I think of that, I think of that. And I've talked to them, they've talked, look at that place. They have built the four-lane roads through the mountains, they have mountains. And boy, they should be able to, they got the decisions, they got the tourism. And anyhow, just like, I'd like to Grand County to get some of that, he and me, to visit, to smoke a hound. We need it there, but then, then we, but then how can we come up with a four-lane road? The mountains are all there, something like that. And I, what I say, just keep, 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 keep the Grand County beautiful. And then thirty or forty years down, you can have a road, you can have a future. You're brave, you're ready, you're willing. And I say, oh, that is the right thing. We need to deal with that. That's all I can say.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Bobby Smith.
Thank you, my co-host. My name's Bobby Smith. I'm an owner of Hammer Rock in Cleveland. I'm in my twelfth year sitting on the board. The twelfth year I've been there, I know of two plans that were looking to relocate in Rockford. And the biggest factor for not coming here was the great, the Paul A. N. At Hammer, we support corridor K. We wish for, we wish for major, whatever, outside. But, you know, the lady from Waysouth, she said, come to Osstil. I don't want to come to Osstil to go to your street, use your street line. Or your RVs or whatever. I like Grand County. I would like to see it opened up a little bit in Grover. And I think the road related Grover.
If you want to be on Grover's, I have a sign. Yeah, that's everyone's sign of this. If there's, if there's anyone else that has not had opportunity to speak, Mr. Rob Schubert, if you want to give me the opportunity to say something. Sure. Come on, sir. How you doing, sir?
I'm Walter Schubert, lifeblood resident of Grand County. Retired contractor, probably seen more of the building than anybody you can imagine in this county. Participating in that. I will say this before I go on, these are my people. These are my people, all my people. If you're anti corridor K, you're not part of the people. Let me say this, that if we don't build it and build it now, the funds will be diverted in another direction to where it will never be built. I heard you what you said, young man, but I know how to work. You'll see the funds for corridor K, they build an I-26 by the place in Nashville. Let me say this, if you're against this road, you're against my people. My people are boldly raised here, my children are raised here. And let me say that we must build it and build it now. Don't let it fail. You people are here, you're anti road. It's your privilege. It's your privilege. But I have seen many children have to leave here because of no energy. Drive up here right now and look at the plant standing. There isn't a plant, there's just only a building. Why? Why? There's no access. I know that when Stanley was here, we were supplementing them for the state government, seven million dollars a year, we called it, to aim to get in and out of here with our profits. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Jennifer, please come on. What's your name, ma'am?
Jennifer Sattler.
Jennifer Sattler.
Jennifer Sattler.
Jennifer Sattler, thank you, ma'am.
I live on Judge Creek and I also work at Stanley Furniture. Stanley Furniture is alive and well in China. And it's not because of the roads. They own millions of dollars out here on the two lane. And if it wasn't for China, they'd still be doing that. So you can't blame the plant for leaving this county. Because it's, it's not gone. It's doing very well in China. And I don't want this, my home, I kicked out twenty years ago and build it. I want it for my children and my grandchildren. And I do not want a road through Judge Creek. You have no idea, the animals, the birds, the water, it's all there. It's a beautiful valley and it echoes. If you have a four-lane road to take that out, you're gonna hear it way, way off. There's not the traffic, there's not the need. It is totally, totally out of line with this county needs. And I'm a little bit angry with that. And I don't appreciate somebody telling me what I need through my home and my York, where my family grew up there. That place has been there for a hundred years and somebody's always been there. And to see a four-lane road through that, it would devastate that old area. I don't care who you are, where you live in this county, you need to get up and say, no, we don't want this four-lane.
Thank you, Mrs. Sattler. Is there anyone else that's got a comment they'd like to do?
Yeah, I'm busy.
Okay.
I live around here from West Rock. Just turned around. I got twenty-five siblings that are in this town. Two people is turning in. And you said on the CP plan everybody's worried, that is not true. They do not realize that when you talk about the rest of the Minnesota area, people want to go down the shot. And I've been at that place for a year. But now.
Sir, you got a comment?
Yes, sir. I would like to, I would like to be, what, um, what's your name? Harold Reed. Harold Reed, thank you, sir. I'm born and bred in Alabama, not alive in Grand County. And I agree with these folks, I got in here late and I understand that this road is overdone and that it's starting to top, and it's enough. Is this road overdone by starting to top and then the road is filled?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's so much in this plan.
No, it's going from, it rocks, builds to Judge Creek. It's gonna follow twenty-nine to Judge Creek in the end.
It's, I don't know.
Wolf, this is the plain corridor K.
Goes from Wolf to Green.
Wolf, we're in the Cherokee here.
Yeah, look, we don't talk about the, the top of the road is filled?
I mean, they're, we're discussing a whole transportation plan. There's items in this plan that are more than just, just the corridor K and A9 project. But obviously, the A9 corridor K is going to be the hot item, as far as the most amazing item. What is a concern to me in here is the route, the idea that's presented in the plan that still has to be vetted and studied and sorted through by CDOT, where it was shown a long path through an area of, of Judge Creek. We don't know at this point if that's gonna be a visible area, if the OD is gonna approve that. And no, it is, it's just a concept that Grand County couldn't make. So there's no battle in mind or anything like that at this point.
Well, there's no sense in being like, look, we've spent hundred, hundred, billion, trillion dollars in the state. And we've got more with this money that's been spent already. And I'm not against the corridor K, you know, I think, I think, really, the office over it was planned together. They didn't go over it was planned. You go, don't go up Judge Creek and change the original plan. Put a prospect for plan loss. And you're gonna have opposition to that. But we don't need the four-lane over there, four-lane over there, put it together with the original plan and stop the study and waste the money on impact studies and all this other. Amen. We don't think that. It's already been studied how many times? I'm not too smart, I can add that much. Let's just, let's just go where the plan has already been stated and work that, put it there and let it go. But we don't need to go up Judge Creek, you know, I don't, I don't stay with this, this group here. We'll fight back with bitter rain, I'll live on the loop. And I'm opposed to that one hundred percent. You understand why? And I hope you all will mind me for that. I hope you all will mind me for that. So let's just stick together and don't cause any hell to lift or anything like that. And don't you gotta go to church, you gotta worship with everybody. Let's get along, but let, let's get, let's get where it was first planned and studied. When through, how we're gonna make America, and how we're gonna waste our money for like two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars, we're gonna understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Harold. Anyone that hasn't had a chance to speak yet, would like an opportunity to speak before we, uh, pass up here. Knock. When there was a money flow or a struggle? Yeah, motion of others sub hearing?
Six. Six.
How about that? Do you have a decision on the CP, CP plan now or do we want to discuss it some more or? Do we have any more discussion on it or are we? Thank you.
Has everybody got a chance to read it?
I've read it and, uh, pretty much all that we've read.
Jake, what do you have?
We've got a, a mile and a half of it, but that was the last one. Wow. I'm ready.
This is, this is. It's not, it's not only. We are not reading here and I'm going to have to. But, uh, I'm going to issue to accept this plan.
Were, the idea was that this accepted while we sent that one to the mountain, so that this, this not been studied?
I've detailed the reasons in the plan of why it was not accepted at the particular document. But it has no merit on the acceptance of the route recognition, the highway approval. But it's just a, we're, we're not recognizing that particular map to the document.
Okay, motions of the document recognition were approved, outlined in the two thousand and ten Grand County Transportation Plan, with the understanding that environmental features on map, on map, on page one through thirty-four.
One national, yes, sir.
And very interesting, we need to document, regarding impact, the significant nature of natural heritage areas are not listed, nor are accepted by any jurisdiction, since we have found clear evidence that the local forest, energy and natural resources have completely restricted the natural area inventory to Grand County. And the map has presented that it's not aligned with the, the identified areas in the adjacent counties on the road.
Do we have say?
Say.
I'll go.